We're gonna all introduce ourselves and then we're gonna ask you all to do the same thing. So Alan, can we start with you?
Sure. Hi, I'm Alan Frater.
Hi, I'm Elaine Gort.
I'm Mark Lees.
Ethan Garrett.
Susan Propper.
Hi Steve.
Keely Ambrose. There we go.
Steve, we just introduced ourselves. I think that you know all of us, but we can start with you for the council. Would you each introduce yourselves?
Steve Gerard, thank you.
Marika Page.
Jay Beckerman.
Carol Sade.
Kelly Owen.
Well, welcome. We are excited to have you. Hopefully you're excited to be here.
Mark? Thank you. If you want to point out exciting news. Mr. Morning Commission. So we had a few agenda items listed out and probably gonna truncate that down to this several items. Take the last couple of articles. Had something about that. But I'm just gonna, my goal here is to just tee up discussion really clear. Employee generation was never one of the things that they thought they could do today. Unless someone really wants to. I'm gonna just tee up these little bit and then we're just looking for some open dialogue between the council. So scrapes and redevelopment, we had a lot of discussions, I think. General discussions in the process. And I kind of broke it down into three categories. One is existing residential neighborhoods. And then there's the more multifamily. And commercial. And the reason I just broke it out that way is because I think when you kind of look at each one of them. In the multifamily, there's probably some areas that are some old buildings that are ripe for redevelopment. You could just move out and maybe something, some situations where we want to see and support. Commercial development, all of this. You know, redevelopment coming on the markets in the downtown, everybody knows the effects on the horizon at some point in time. But the one that's probably got the most, most of our attention. The recent ones, the residences. Some of the scrapes that are happening. It's frankly, almost all, most of that is all happening in the White, White's market. And unfortunately, several of those are highly physical, right and well, pretty rough there. And you've seen some, you state it down, certainly big homes. So I think character is one of the issues, you know, the character, the changing, the how to react with what we want to see. Just for a little bit of background, we, Julie and I 15 years ago worked on neighborhood preservation policy for, put something like that. And we did that for any neighborhood in older subdivision. New subdivisions all have like flatted disturbance envelopes and building envelopes. So it kind of confines where the building is going to happen. But in some of these older subdivisions, it seems it's setbacks, you know, anything that when you compare wealthier to bill. And so there was a concern that we should do some type of implementation there. Took out a proposal to the community and get some open houses and maybe got a lot of negative backstories. Things that were addressing. They're trying to look at meeting the size and character of existing neighborhoods. And so we ended up creating a subcommittee for a few months met with us and came up with kind of a compromise solution. Did limit home side and the neighbors like Weishorn and that. It's just that it's not to the extent that probably some of the like cities. So I think for example, Weishorn, a lot of people, each seven or eight thousand square feet. It's kind of, there's a plenty of people that are in any way of, that is, the homes that are being built right now are under that pressure. And we do have a hearing, so maybe. How that appears. Some of the other things, you know, a couple of nice, like the recent, um, that July style. That's been generally six years kind of architecture, you know, that's only a few of some of that. Those are a few things that play into that, but we plan to come into the kind of council at the end of August, second year. With more discussion about many, many of the reservations. First of all, if they come onto homework on there and research and phone recommendations and bring up what they've done. That's something that we definitely provide more detailed information to council, you guys can start thinking about. I wanted to issue besides this character is what about energy? How does that play into this? We had a study that asked, and it showed that larger homes have a disproportionate amount of energy associated with it. So working at 12,000 square foot homes is not, does not use up 12 times as much energy than 1,000 square foot. They find it's like twice as much. Because you're spending that all of your energy. So anyway, energy is another piece of new, need to think about to new extent. On the field currently. Have to say a lot about that. Those are just a few issues related to that. I think I just want to add a few issues that the council can then touch that share.
Mark, just a quick question. When you held the focus groups on lot size, all that, around when was that? How long ago did you have that?
I would love to hear what the planning commission, because I think you presented sort of that we've been discussing this, but I don't know where the planning commission. stands on this, or if you guys have.
I haven't been talking to her, I think, so we might.
Yeah, I certainly share the concerns around this. I live on what has now become fondly known as gold scrape. And so, you know, I feel the impact of what's been going on. Alan saw an article in the Wall Street Journal that was talking about other communities, including Aspen and Steamboat, that have been dealing with this issue. And they both have managed to set an actual square foot limit on these new homes. And as far as I could tell from the article, there wasn't any litigation in response to this, but you know, I don't know, maybe they didn't cover it. But it's interesting to me that both of those communities seem to have implemented this. I would like to see us move towards some kind of solution. Because I think it's changing the character of our neighborhoods. Certainly in my neighborhood. And I'm open to ideas on how to get at it. If it's not a square foot limit, you know, some other mechanism, you know, setbacks or whatever. But I'm definitely interested in looking into it and seeing what we can do.
I think it's important that we, number one, establish what the issues are that we have with it. Changing of character of neighborhoods of real generality, and I think we need to be specific about what it is that we do or don't like. I have probably 20 years of insight into this because one of the businesses that I had in the Washington DC area did infill building and we dealt with communities where we went in and we took down houses that had become too old to really improve. And the best use of those was to take them down, put in a new, energy efficient, modern house that a family can use, that has spaces that are consistent with the way people use houses, et cetera. And in doing that, you have to deal with neighbors and what people think about the look, and there's a lot of factors in there. And you mentioned litigation and it's a tedious place because people have the right to do with what they would like to with their property within certain limits. So we have to be careful there, that we don't step on property rights, but we still maintain the character. So I think it's important that in delving into this thing, we decide what it is we don't like, what it is we would like to see. Because there are buildings that have become obsolete. And there's a number of them that were built, both commercial buildings and individual homes in the seventies that just aren't efficient anymore. They're not environmentally efficient. They just don't work anymore. And sometimes the best use of those is for a new owner to take the house down and build something that's more appropriate. And more appropriate is in the eyes of the beholder, but should be framed by some framework like we have in the historic district here. Perhaps not as stringent as that, but in general, this is what we would like to see when you do a project like that. And it's really, it's really an important thing because the acceptability, we, we did it. The homes that we built were generally spec, so we had to do something that was very presentable, that fit into the neighborhood and that would sell. In order to have the economic model that we had for our business. And all those things are important and it's a challenge to keep everybody happy. But it is doable because I did it for a long time.
I love homes and I worked for a custom home builder and I ran a lot of projects in my previous career. I think quality matters. I think when the home is fitting with the vernacular and the character of the town and the design standards. I think that makes for a home that the community can be proud of. I think one of the big concerns is size and the economic implications of that. Is, is a home too big to be in character? You know, Mark certainly alluded to that in some of the previous work in Weishorn. And and I know that the percentage of owner occupied homes or local homes that have residents in the, in them continues to go down in Breckenridge. And I know that we all work very hard to keep Breckenridge a town where people live and where the people that make the town are able to live. So if we begin to articulate what matters to the town and the vision plan is right there, and I look at it all the time. But if we begin to articulate, as Mark said, what we don't like about some of these new homes. I think we could begin to steer some of the design and maintain some of the quality in the new homes.
As I see it, what we're addressing here is, as I said, size of homes. Obviously, the architecture. But also the character of the neighborhood. These bigger homes are becoming second homes. Whereas Weishorn has always been historically, at least since I've been mostly a locals neighborhood. I don't have an answer. I don't, I'm addressing the legality of how do we restrict properties? That's a that's a dangerous road to drive down, in my view.
Yes.
I share everybody's concerns. I think we're all in this room, pretty much on the same page. I, I don't, I don't, I beyond incentives, somehow incentivizing property owners to limit the size or stay within the architectural standards that we'd like to see. I'm not sure what we can do.
Yes, I'll talk. I took a few notes here. So I have no overall opinion. It's a very tough, difficult topic. I think it's about balance, like most things in life, and I think the town of Breck is really unique in many ways. And I think one of the things that makes it unique is we have a lot of diversity of architectural design. And I think it would be sad to not have some areas of our town have the more modern or what people want kind of construction or houses. But also at the same time, I don't think, I don't want my neighborhood all tore down and then replaced with that. Because then my house would look so dated, right? And somebody else might want to buy it and tear it down, right? So I just took a few notes on things that I think are important to me. I think as far as like building these bigger houses, maybe we can have requirements that the materials that they use are, some are recycled or more eco-friendly. I don't know what that is, but there's lots, I know my house in Virginia, we put in recycled wood floors and that turned out really cool. So things like that. I don't know if we can like that. I think with scrapes, it's, to me, it's better than them just building further out and more up on the mountains and just having the sprawl of the town. And it kind of taking over all of our environment here. So that's something I think that needs to be weighed in. I believe quality matters as far as the quality of the home, so it'll last. Yeah, so I live in in the Highlands and I look out my, my window and it's pretty much all empty houses most of the year. So I don't know what to think about that. You know, that whole valley, there's a lot of animals that probably lived there. And I don't know where they went to or, or what. And yeah, so it's a lot of empty bedrooms in this house, in this whole town that just sit there empty all the time. And I don't know how I feel about that. So things I think about, maybe it's helpful for you. Thanks.
Well, putting on my engineer hat, I, I think one step would be, how many lots are we talking about? So I think maybe doing an audit first of the Weishorn neighborhood, if that's the neighborhood primarily we're talking about. How many homes have already or in the process of being scraped or redeveloped or what's the average? How many, maybe doing a census of age of homes and which ones are likely, what lots are likely to be purchased and redeveloped? The most visible obviously is Wellington Road. And it looks like maybe, what's the expression, the horses are out of the barn or the elephants are out of the barn already. It might be too late to do anything about what, what's the most visible, which is Wellington Road. You know, we've got, if you go down Morningstar, there's some really wild architecture there, you know, whether, and I have no opinion on it. It's, I think some of the designs are interesting and I don't know how we could legislate or put up a code against anything like that. But I just think that as a start, I don't know how much energy you want to put into this if there's not many lots left to really do anything about. That's all I got.
I have some comments. Apologies to everyone for not being there in person, but trust me, you don't want the, you don't want the COVID that, that I currently have. So thanks for letting me appear remotely. But I, you know, at, at the risk of, of trying to give legal advice, which is not my role in this, in this, on this commission. But I'm less concerned about the legality of the regulations in terms of becoming some sort of takings. You know, this is, no one is, you know, if we have some sort of square footage limitation and I, I, I do, I think, support that. The town is, has historically been, you know, has, has had this character. And I think, you know, sort of a funky kind of, if you think back to the way the town was in the seventies and eighties. And, and we've come a long way from that. And I'm not saying that we want to go, you know, go backwards, but I think we want to preserve some of that uniqueness. And I think having a square footage limitation or having a limitation on how much you can, you know, not necessarily like the historic preservation district, but some, some parameters on what, on what you can do in terms of scraping a house, how much you can tear down to rebuild and how much you can exceed the existing footprint, I think is probably where this will land. I, you know, I have no doubt that any buildings or any, any homes that are rebuilt under that sort of ordinance. You know, there's no, there's no real fear of a taking in that sort of situation because no one's lost any value. They've gained it, if anything. That's, that's one of the, the benefits of a community like this is that's so popular is that you're, you know, you're not, you're never, it's never going to be, well, as long as it's done correctly, that type of ordinance, you're not gonna, you're not taking away the entirety of someone's value of their lot. So anyway, there's, there's a lot more I could go into on that, including some of the successful litigation efforts that have just been defended in the county and at the town. But yeah, I just, you know, overall, I would say I would sort of, I would support this, this effort. And I think there's a number of different ways you can get at this. And I think I agree with all of my fellow commissioners' comments about, I think it's, you know, I think we want to do something. And it's just going to be, how do we go about it in a fair way and an equitable way? So that we, you know, you're never going to make everybody happy, but to try to come up with something that really does the best for the town overall.
Just circling back, one final comment. I think that, that the town is probably on very solid ground restricting square footage and lot coverage and things of that nature. And that might be a good starting point to get into what we are going to restrict and what we don't want to restrict.
Mark, what other neighborhoods would be in the same, in the same boat as the Weishorn that don't have building envelopes that maybe like with?
That's, you know, because of its proximity to town value and there's no architecture, wrong architecture. That's why part of the reasons. I'm not sure of the other. I mean, like ones that don't have all the worries, Mark.
Here on Road or AKA Trainwreck, that's county, right?
Thanks, Mark. And I think that, you know, I appreciate all the comments that came from you all, and I think that's really good insight. There is, you know, it's always interesting when you have an example of what you don't want. You know, you can point to it and go, that, that's, that's what we don't want. And whether it's, you know, the amount of glazing that's on the, on the, you know, we're talking obviously about single family homes. But what, what the amount of glazing is compared to siding, you know, what is the house size? How much open space does it take up on the lot? What are the setbacks? A lot of the things that we've spoken about are, what is the perceived mass of it? If it is going, if it's got a 34 foot height restriction and the entire roof is at 34 feet, that's a lot different than having a pitch roof in which only the roof line's at 34 feet. And that has a, you know, a definite perception difference on that. And, and so in looking at this, and it's becoming more and more pertinent as we become more and more built out, right? We're at 93, 94% built out of our, of our lots. And so as you start getting closer to 100, these redevelopment opportunities are more financially feasible than they might have been when there were a whole bunch of empty lots. And, you know, a friend of mine is a builder down in Austin and I was chatting with him about it. And he was talking about this roof line, they call it like a tenting provision in, in the code. Where you can only be at the maximum building height for a singular roof line. So that you prevent, you have a pitch roof and versus a flat roof that takes up the entire lot, you know, basically footprint or lot. And so looking at that, thinking about where setbacks are right now and where would a more reasonable setback provision be for lots without building envelopes seems like a sensible way to approach of maybe be able to push the, the structure off of the lot lines a little bit more. And then perhaps allowing for more open space to be on the, on the lot itself. So if you're dealing with a, a quarter acre or an eighth of an acre, that we're not going from setback to setback to setback on each of the lines. And so these are like, just trying to think about what other communities are doing, what are the levers that are available to pull that are maybe more palatable than just saying, all right, in this neighborhood, you can't build over X number of square feet.
I think Jay has brought up a lot of points that I heard when I was campaigning during this election, especially in the Weishorn neighborhood, in the core of town. One of the major complaints and asks about why this is happening, I think deals with the change in architectural style, which encourages more glazing. And you know, a house, a modern design house up on Discovery Hill in the Highlands with lots of glazing is shining up on the hill and Highlands. In the Weishorn neighborhood, it's close to a lot of other houses and the light trespass is much greater. I had some specific complaints and did some driving around at night and there are some houses that just flood downhill with light through large windows and things that are part of the, the new style of modern construction, something to think about there. As Jay points out, it's perceived mass too. The idea that a lot of modern architecture is flattened, making the whole thing long, tall, across the entire space that they could actually use. We have in the code provisions for side setbacks, which allow you to violate that and gain more setback by paying up with three EV stations. And of course, these people who are building it in a And of course, these people who are building an eight million dollar house couldn't afford to put in easily three EV stations to pay for that sin. And all of a sudden, this house is much closer on both sides than the one that was there. In fact, maybe even much more so because the one that was there wasn't even pushing its setbacks at that point. Um, so I think we can look at setbacks. We can look at, at glazing and making sure that, while I do, like a variety of architecture, we have to pay more attention maybe to the proximity in the neighborhood. Another thing that, that I think is important to think about is not just the density of the building that's going in there, the structure, but the human density. When a three bedroom, three thousand square foot house is replaced by a six or seven bedroom, seven thousand square foot house. You don't just have three or four people living in this property. You have twelve. And that creates more vehicles, more people, more human density that's going into that lot. I think everybody's expressed a lot of good ideas of what we can look at with this. And I think we just have to be thought, the idea of kind of inventorying what looks like maybe the next best targets is, is something to think about. But it's coming and it's going to happen. And as the inventory shrinks and the money comes in, they can't afford Aspen anymore. They can't afford Vale. They're going to be looking at Breckenridge. You know, you bring out an important point that, uh, I want to circle back to. Um, someone mentioned incentivizing what we would like to see. And one of the things that perhaps could incentivize people building smaller or affordable houses that people might actually live in is that if we created incentives or flexibility to divide a larger piece of property that somebody could build an eight thousand or ten thousand foot house on. Give somebody, a developer, uh, the option of splitting that up into smaller parcels. They have the potential of making more money for three or four houses on that parcel than they would the large house. And also there's the opportunity to provide more affordable housing. And we're not talking about workforce housing here. We're talking about housing for people who might want to retire here, move here, live here, whatever. Um, and there really is not a lot of opportunities for that market of housing currently in town. So just something to think about in terms of incentivizing. Mark, that's an interesting point because I think we'll be able to see how that turns out. Uh, I think Mike is working on a project on a lot that we spent behind the Father Dyer Church. It's going to have two residents in it that are, they're not going to be wide, they're going to be long. We'll be able to see how that turns out and what that project looks like in, in real life as opposed to on paper.
Uh, Boulder Colorado's done that where they preserved the, um, the large existing home and then the backyard, um, cul-de-sac disconstructed and a handful of, uh, small affordable homes are constructed. And it has a little bit of a Wellington look to it, uh, but they've been pretty successful. It, it's an infill strategy, it raises density, um, and it, uh, provides fairly affordable new housing. It's an, it's an interesting idea, Mark.
Well, you know, it, it, it's, it's trade-offs. And when you do that, you create what we call dogleg lots. And long driveways and things like that. So you need to decide what it is that we want and what it is that we don't want. And there's, there's trade-offs there. We have to make, um, some accommodation for things that we may not want to get something that's better. And I think it's important that we come up with an idea of what it is we would like to see people do rather than just having the freedom to do whatever they want to once they've scraped the lot.
Uh, just a couple of comments on both of those. So Telluride has mastered the infill strategy. But, uh, that there, almost every home in the downtown area has another unit behind. But those are not necessarily workforce or ADU units. They're just as expensive as the homes that have been redeveloped in front. Uh, Frisco was also doing that with a lot of lots. And the, the, the density is huge, is, it's ve- they're very dense part. They're taking single family lots and they're building four, three million dollar homes on those lots. So I think we just have to be careful or decide, is that what the town wants? Um, so instead of one six million dollar home, there's four three million dollar homes on that lot.
I think that, Alan, I think that's just a matter of properly incentivizing.
Yes.
If, if you have a restriction as to what that end product is going to be, it's not necessarily going to be a second home. It's not going to be something that somebody is ever going to be able to short-term rent. And if you have a vision that these are going to be homes that people are going to live in. And you structure incentives in such a way that that's what we come up with. I think that we end up with a better.
Yep. Yeah. I've just pointed that out as yet, what, what the direction those two towns have.
You're absolutely right. Yeah.
Yeah, I, um, I don't disagree. I was actually thinking along the same lines, but coming at it from a affordable housing perspective a little bit more. But I think, Mark, you're, I think it's, I mean, I think it's a good idea. I think we have to be careful. Our own master plans, um, and agreements, you know, don't allow us to create that extra density, uh, from a market rate perspective. But certainly if there's some sort of restriction and we could get it in under a, you know, and a, uh, local housing type of, um, umbrella, then I think, you know, I would support that type of effort.
The council will be, uh, realize it was not, um, the council will be discussing this more, um, here in a couple of weeks. And we'll be updating you guys and you'll have a chance to participate in that all as we move forward. Um, the other thing on the agenda under redevelopment was just, uh, multifamily commercial. Like I said earlier, a little different animal there, maybe something we want to incentivize in some ways. Um, any thoughts on that in, at this point?
You know, I, I do think that when it comes to the multifamily units that we see, they are aging and they seem to be aging rapidly, right? And, um, those are going to be much more complex problems to look through where it may take some deep pockets to, uh, make, uh, going into that endeavor worthwhile for, uh, for a professional to do. And because, you know, you have multiple owners, um, or you're going to be displacing renters. And the, the ROI may not be the same there for, for someone to, an entrepreneur or a developer to go through and get. And so at that point, I think that is somewhere that we should start looking at now. Uh, as those buildings are not getting younger and really see what are the options? What are other communities doing? How do, and, you know, what are the different options that are available to, um, to, to provide a bed base for our workforce, for our in-town, uh, guests? Um, for our town that, that makes sense, that is, uh, habitable and not, you know, crumbling. And we've seen what, how's, um, what insurance has done, property insurance has done for our multifamily units. It's untenable. These HOA costs are going through the roof. And, and if there's a way to maybe use that and try to find where we can leverage, working with insurance groups that if certain steps are taken, that they're, um, they're granted better rates, which it'd be more advantageous. But I think there's a lot of room for creative thinking of where to do it and where our long-range planning are. You know, when we look at the single family homes, it's, it's right in front of us. It's, you know, it's right here. I think these multi-fa- multifamily units, this is something that is maybe long-range planning. I think it should be a five to twenty-year, uh, time horizon that, that starts now. And I, I don't have much experience with it other than knowing that, uh, it, it's coming down the pipe. And, and I think that, uh, we should be looking at some solutions.
Thanks, Jay. Uh, next issue, um, actually we changed the order a little bit. I'd like to talk about carrying over points in that. Um, this is more just a, maybe a clarification. We've had some questions about that recently. Um, I think from both planning commission and council. We've got a section in our code that talks about duration of point assignments. And essentially says that when you get a development permit, um, you know, it's, well, there's another section that says it's vested for a period of time, usually three years unless something else is, is approved by the council. Um, like we recently did with BGV and that development agreement, extended it a longer time period. But within that time period, if, um, an applicant comes back and proposes to change that project some way, small or big, they have access to the positive points that they received in the approval to the excess of zero. So if it ended up with a passing point analysis of five points plus five, those five points are on the table. Should they propose something that, for example, we say, well, that's going to cause more site disturbance. We're going to ding you four points for it. They could actually offset that with that pool of points they have available. That's the way our code works right now. We, we talk about it, I don't know, frequently, but it comes up sometimes with the planning commission when we see these projects come in. The other piece of that is a lot of times we will have applicants come in and say, I want to make a change here. And technically, some of these would need to come back to the planning commission. But, um, if the change is, is something that's automatic in the code, basically it's numeric based. In other words, I'm going to get two points because I want to heat the driveway, but I'm going to put in two EV chargers. We'll approve that at a staff level. And the reason we do that is because if we bring it to planning commission, there's nothing to argue about. That's how, how the code reads. So if there's, i- if there's no discretion in that decision, we will handle that as staff because it's the most expeditious way to deal with it. And it's kind of a waste of the commission's time to come to them. But if there's discretion in that decision, that's when we would say, well, this will need to go back to the planning commission for, for review. So, um, be glad to try to answer any questions you guys have on that. But I just wanted to clarify those points because I know it's come up a little bit recently.
Mark, thank you for the explanation. And this one's mine. You know, and, and I've asked, I've talked to Mark and Julia about this. And there, there are some applications that have come in front of you all as well as, uh, myself when, uh, when I was on planning commission. And, uh, where the outcome of the project was different than what we approved. And, you know, I'd go back in my notes and go, well, man, I don't remember there being this fireplace. I don't remember it being, uh, encroaching on the setback or some of these relative policies that, um, we, we didn't go through or weren't part of the application. And then come to find out, well, they had three points. And so they used them by either, you know, maybe taking away something that gave them positive points. So, uh, they had three EV chargers and they're like, well, we have plus three, so we're going to not do those. And so they would end up at a zero point analysis. Or if they had the plus points and they're like, well, we can erase some, uh, some, yeah, some sins as Stephen says, uh, and we can, we can put in this fireplace or we can do whatever it is. And there was something that just felt wrong about it. Like it just felt like a bait and switch. Um, even though clearly it was within the code, there wasn't discretion. It was black and white of going, well, they could have done this. It just wasn't, it, it wasn't visible. It wasn't out in the open. There wasn't, it didn't appear to be, have transparency. And so it was something that I, I was hoping for some explanation to be, to the whole group as well as if there was any dialogue to be had. Not that anything necessarily should change, but I think it should be something that we're aware of. That when a project comes, you know, in front of you all and there's significant, you know, positive points, that those aren't just three points that going, oh, it doesn't, you know, this thing can pass with plus ten, knowing and knowing in the back of your mind that there, there is, there is some damage that can be done, uh, with those points. And I think it was worthwhile.
So to be clear, you're saying that a project's approved with positive points and then during the construction of said project, the builder is, is, is adding sins because they have the points. Is that, is that? Or can't we just say, once a project's approved, points go to zero? Because it's, it's, it's approved as submitted. That's what you have to build.
We're approving the positive and the negative points. They can't change either side of that balance, uh, of that balance sheet.
But they can. So, and I just, it, it was something that has, you know, I've, I've spoken, um, I would Julie and Mark about a couple of times just because it, it felt like going, and it's just, there's something that doesn't sit right on this. Um, but again, I just wanted there to be transparency for it so that, um, they're all on the same page.
As a builder, I never knew that I could do that.
Wasn't aware of, and I wonder where just the lots, like where you all stand with that is something that, that, do we need to look at that?
I don't think that's happening very often. Myself, I've done that one time in a three years. Like Mark mentioned, um, they just wanted an extra egress to be a snowmelt. Every project is not changing their point factor. They need the planning commission's plan. So they don't want to go to people that.
Having said that, it's not a big problem. Um, this particular system of points is what we do here. But that's not necessarily what they do in other municipalities. And I've had experience on the East Coast where they're different systems. So if we are committed to the point system that we're using, I think that we need to be committed to that. And there is some give and take with those points. I don't hear that anybody is abusing this. And from my perspective, if somebody goes through the process and they've earned the points, then they should have the ability to, we started all this with the carryover. And we saw this with the BGV projects and the Breckenridge Land projects that are going on down, um, by the building zone. And if somebody has earned those points, it seems to me they should have the opportunity to use those points. And that's just my perspective because we've committed to the point system.
But once, once a project's approved, yes, you can use the points up to the point that, that the project's approved as, as presented and, and gone through the approval process. Why, why, why should they? Like I said, I never knew that that was, that was a possibility. So I've always assumed, once it's approved, that's it.
Well, case in point, I remember talking about, um, the various projects that are going on down on McCain property. And Breckenridge Land, um, was in here and they've mentioned the fact that there's some points left over for a recreational, something or another that they would be able to use on an adjacent project. And I think that's a little different.
That's it.
And I think that is what you're talking about with this carryover. Are you not? That's, that's what I understood it to be.
It has to be on the same project. You can't just transfer it to somewhere else. Yeah.
So it can't be used after the fact. So project has a project approval vesting. So if the project is vested for three years, they have to use those points within the three years. So that, and like a single family home is eighteen months. A class A is three years. They have to use them within that time. They can't come back six years later. a class A is three years. They have to use them within that time. They can't come back six years later and say, hey, I had these points because chances are we might have changed the code and can't use it anymore. So anyways, it's just kind of that. I mean, that is their entitlement essentially that they got approved with those points.
So do others of you guys have strong feelings on this or kind of undecided?
I I guess I just wanted to say I feel where you're coming from. I feel like some of these points are really easy to get and some of them are hard to get. So maybe we should kind of look at our point system. Yeah. Yeah, which ones?
Well, you know, one of the things we've talked about is Stephen alluded to it a little bit is are we being overly generous with the EV points? I think I would say four or five years ago. We absolutely needed to go there, incentivize that, but you know, it's becoming more mainstream. So is that something we want to take a look at? I'm sure there's a few of these areas that we could, you know, it's evolving. I mean, we just added the incentive based on the council's guidance to electrify, you know, four points if you go fully electric. So you know, it changes over time, our priorities and what's, what is something we really need to incentivize? Think we used to talk about how, you know, you could get a point for paving the driveway, that type of thing. Back in the day.
Property values have skyrocketed, you know, five, even five years ago, an EV that cost was something to consider today. What are five of them? Who cares? Really, which is what we're talking about in the Wisehorn. All those, the Wisehorn is going to turn into a trophy neighborhood. That's, that's what what's happening here and and while I I understand what Mark was saying about incentivizing by by breaking that property up, that's not reality. What's good? Reality is people with a lot of money are coming to this town and they want to build trophy homes. Period. And they're looking for where they can do that. They can't do it in the Highlands anymore because there's no property left. So they're going to the Wisehorn and the realtors are pushing that because that's where they can push these people. And and that's what we're going to see more and more. And so yeah, these, these, and we're going to see more and more of 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 those people, not developers, because that's not what it's driven by. It's driven by private property owners who want these lovely homes. And they're going to, they're going to take advantage of those of those point analysis and and every way they can.
So one of the saving places where we meet with the other ski towns. I was surprised how much larger the workforce housing fees were for homes in Aspen, Telluride. Can't remember Crested Butte, et cetera. But maybe one of the sort of comprehensive solutions to what we're speaking about here is if you want to build a big house in Wisehorn. You're going to be more generous with fees for workforce housing.
I brought that up in our last meeting about about, you know, the impact fee is hasn't changed in years and years and it's
It's kind of a little, but not much.
Not much.
No, it hasn't. Yeah. Um, in in the because of the time we have, and I'm sure we're going to resolve the point thing tonight, but I did want to just get back. I may have pushed through redevelopment a little too quickly. If anyone had anything else they wanted to offer up on that before we would like to just touch on building heights before we close up here today. Any other thoughts folks had on that? Okay, building height. Planning commission has brought this up recently several times. It's really interesting how our code works. Once you get outside the historic district. For the most part, you can build a, you can go to 35 feet tall on a single family residence. That's just allowed. Outside of the historic district. However, in a lot of cases, if you're going to build multi-family, you can build 26 feet. And once you go beyond that, because 26 feet is considered two stories, but once you go beyond that, you start to accrue negative points. So that's maybe valuable in some cases. But what I think the commission has seen is that it may be to the detriment of some workforce housing projects. You know, they're looking to obviously go a little taller than 26 feet. And because then you get negative points that are kind of hard to overcome. If you're trying to build workforce housing, you know, it's it it it's a tight program on a site. So commissioners, I know I've heard from several of you about that and you might want to just expound on that a little bit for the benefit of the council.
Well, I think we should allow it to go to three stories and that would be closer to the single family height. And if you think about the collective cost of the infrastructure, the site, foundation, walls, et cetera, and if our goal is to build workforce housing, allowing those to be taller, a story taller makes sense. I also think about the location of those out in McCain and north of town in general. Those are bigger projects on bigger sites and that height is not an issue there.
So can you just expand on where, I mean, because I guess I, and I'm confused as to where this, who's building workforce housing besides us? I mean, I know we have a few projects going on, but
We saw.
Yeah, we have a private one. Unfortunately, it's an active application right now, but it's the way it just came up, but yeah, we do have one right now. So and and I'm I'm sorry, but it also comes into play on our projects. Yes, it's a town project. We could theoretically wave the magic wand, but we don't like to do that. And so, you know, we end up getting negative points for height on every workforce housing project we work on. You know, as a town project.
I think it's important if we're going to do workforce housing, affordable housing, that we maximize all of our opportunities to do that. And as Mike alluded to, if you're going to build two stories, you can get 50% more occupancy with the same infrastructure cost. It doesn't make any sense at all to limit it to two stories. It's just defeating the purpose of workforce housing. It's not a smart move from a development and real estate perspective.
I would, I would even say go even more to four stories. I just think it's so important and we have these sites and I know the town was, there was all this concern about the eyesore the garage would be and it's just not noticeable. And I think that at certain locations, even going higher, doubling, doubling the height, we should make the maximum advantage of the sites we have left for workforce housing. I mean, this this is a picture sent in for something we're discussing later. I mean, there's five, six stories here with peaks. So and that's blocking the mountain view. So I think the locations where we may be doing more workforce housing. I don't think four stories are gonna is going to be obtrusive.
If you get in your car on 70 and you drive to Gypsum and you notice all of the multi-family that you pass on the way, very few of it isn't three and four stories. We're just kind of shooting ourselves in the foot when we build workforce housing and only allow two stories. It makes no sense.
One peak eight is eight stories at the maximum. The scale is wouldn't be a problem, especially on the sites north of town.
I agree with everything they've said here. I also think allowing taller heights, you can have parking underneath, which I think people really like. They don't want to park. They don't want that donut of parking lot around their building. It's not, it's not pretty. It's not a nice environment for your dog to walk around. You have to shovel your car. So I think it's very important we consider increasing the height and I think it's site specific too. I'm up for higher like him. I think it makes it much much more cost effective. Not that I'm an expert on that. But we definitely have limited amount of space and we need a lot of workforce housing in this area. So I've been told. So it's my opinion.
I'll just say quickly, I agree. I think we can go higher than two stories for workforce housing without accruing negative points.
I also agree.
It would also be nice if there was some incentive to put parking underneath buildings and not surround park buildings with asphalt. You you use the word down it and I just returned from the trip to another ski town and I was amazed at how much in, well, in the Dolomites. And I was amazed at how often they put parking underneath buildings. And it it really did make for cleaner sites and better quality and it, you know, it parking lots are not anything that any of us want to look at, but if if combining raising the the height of workforce housing and incentivizing moving parking underneath the buildings, I think you have a bit of a win-win.
Mark is, um, some stupid, but is measuring the height, this, is it the same methodology for a single family house as a multifamily of like kind of the mid-tier to the apex or is there?
Yes. Yeah, it gets more complicated on a hill because you have to kind of go like this to measure it, but yeah.
And in that point, but it's done this, this methodology is the same with either way.
Do you know why it was lower for multi-family before? Like, what was the thought process behind that? Oh, just in general, like why, why our code is 26 for multifamily and then what 35 for a single family like?
It depends, you know, a lot of the, it depends on the land use district it's in. But those ones up on the north end of town, that's how they were written. I think maybe it had to do with don't want to see something that's too big from Highway nine. And as you know, we've had former council members who have been very opposed to going, you know, taller, thinking that's, you know, really going to be visually out of character with the town. So I guess that's probably the best answer.
But in Vista Verde, you can't even see it from Highway nine as you're going by.
Yeah, it's in the background for sure. Yeah. Anyway, that's one. Think you've heard that maybe we'll bring to the council at some point if you to talk about a little bit more to see if there's some interest in pursuing that.
Can I just say something?
Absolutely.
So I think there have been like two or three issues, maybe four issues raised here that I feel like you guys using the code all the time are the ones who know, you know, what works and what's not working. It's very hard for us at council to read the packets and really get the nuance of, oh, this is, you know, the third or fourth time we've had an issue with this number of points or with this code or the way it's written. And we would love to work through those issues. And so if you guys can be specific in the meeting and let staff know that this is something that really needs either council input or we would like to let council know that this isn't working. Could we have a work session on this? It would be incredibly helpful for all of us sitting up here to just be able to do a better job.
Well, I'm just curious though, because we're not allowed to do design in a in a meeting. So if a a new workforce house project came, it would come to staff first. And maybe that would be the opportunity to, you could question the developer and say, would you want to go to three or four stories on this project? Because we can't.
No, I'm saying, I'm actually saying, so we've heard you, like you guys just raising your hand and saying, this is an issue we should talk about is really all that needs to happen. I'm not suggesting that design specifics are something that you deal with, but definitely, you know, Mark brought this and was like, this is something that planning commission really needs to talk about with council and we're obviously not going to make a decision today, but I think if we have a memo from Mark and just laying out, here's historically what we've been doing. Here's what, you know, we do get applications that would have liked to go higher, would have, you know, resulted in this much more density and giving us all the information. Then we can make a decision about that, but it helps a lot when you guys flag what does, what's not working or what's working great that if we change, if we're trying to change something and you guys say pump the brakes. That actually worked. We use that all the time and we need it. That's another tool for us to know about.
Great. Well, we've used up our hour and if anyone has any last things you'd like to mention at this point. But thanks. I think this has been a really productive conversation.
I guess I do want to say one more thing. I know how much time and effort that you all are putting into your enormous packets. And I just wanted to say that council knows and many of the community know that the town is a better place for all of the review and all of the nuance that you guys make sure you understand and know about each of these projects that comes across your desks. So we really appreciate all that you're doing for the town.
Back at you.
Together.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you. Thanks for having us.
See you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keely.
I was muted before. Thank you.
That's, I'm glad I asked.
Oh, are you going to?
Yeah, I can do this. I need to know how general versus specific. There's actually two involved in the current and active project.
And Mark, you want me to start up like we normally do?
Absolutely, Mark.
Okay, let me get a roll call.
Okay, Mr. Frechter.
Present.
Mr. Giller.
Here.
Mr. Lees.
Here.
His proper.
Here.
Mr. Guerra.
Here.
Ms. Gort.
Here.
Ambrose.
Here.
Commissioners, are there any changes to the minutes from last meeting? As there are none, we'll approve them as they stand. Staff, are there any changes to our agenda?
No, there are not, Chair.
As part of a certified local government, we're asked to take public comment on historical preservation issues in the community. With that, I'll open up the meeting to any public comment. If you are attending the meeting by phone, press star nine on your phone and then six to unmute yourself. Staff, is there anybody out there? Okay. So I think we only have one item on the agenda tonight. There's no consent order items and we'll just jump right into the public hearing for the first item, which is the Ninth Amendment to the amended Peak seven and eight master plan. PL dash 2024 dash 0117, Class A, final hearing.
All right, good evening. All right, now we're on. Good evening, planning commissioners and Chair. Sarah Crum for the record, Planner Three for the town. Before you tonight is the final hearing for the Ninth Amendment to the Peak Seven and Eight Master Plan. There was a preliminary hearing for this amendment held on June 18th. So for this final hearing, I'm going to just quickly go through the consensus items and then cover the one change since the preliminary hearing and go over a summary of the points analysis, which has not changed. So on the screen, we have the planning area. So everyone's familiar with the base of PK eight and And this master plan amendment, um it does a few things. It authorizes the new density transfer according to the development agreement that was approved by the council in this previous past April. It also creates um the new planning areas that are within the existing planning area, but creates Planning Area G and H. And um outlines the new uses for those um newly created planning areas. So the consensus um at the previous preliminary hearing, um the creation of Planning Area G and Planning Area H, um those were agreed upon by the commissioners with consensus that um the uses outlined in the amendment, which allowed for residential uses on those two new planning areas as opposed to guest service facilities and ski run. Um, those were um agreed upon by the commissioners. We also covered density on, at the preliminary hearing under Policy Three. This amendment solidifies and authorizes the transfer of density as outlined in the development agreement from the gondola lots, which um are, you know, parcels one, two, and three um in the development agreement. And it authorizes transfer of density up to parcel four. The former site of the East Peak Hotel, East Peak, East Peak Eight Hotel, the future development of a new lodge on the base, at the base of Peak Eight. And the new um density at the planning area, the total will now be seven hundred twenty-nine point three SFEs. And on the specific peak uh Peak Eight parcel four site, that's one hundred twenty-seven point six SFEs residential, eleven SFEs commercial, seven point two SFEs of guest services, and up to seventy-four point two SFEs to be used in any category. Um, and because um this represents total allowed density, that's not necessarily what will be the final product will be built, but that's allowed density. So in the previous hearing, you guys approved and agreed upon that transfer, which again just authorizes what's in the development agreement. We also looked at the language for carving out area for the um Breckenridge Outdoor Education Center. And that is um now solidified in the master plan with special language about where that um will be located in the area and parking associated with that carved out area according to the ma- uh development agreement. At the preliminary hearing, we also discussed um the architectural compatibility section within the master plan. And we he- heavily discussed the new amendment to the language describing the buffer area. Uh, that's the area to the east side of the new proposed development. And we talked about how in the development agreement, the council agreed um that in the master plan going forward, buffer area would be prioritized over stepping down the buildings on this east side. So this amendment um really encapsulates the language that was put forth in the master, uh, sorry, in the development agreement. It also creates um a new absolute policy for height. This was already in the master plan. But this amended language creates and makes it an absolute policy that the maximum uh height of the new building will not exceed the existing elevation of the east cross gable of the One Ski Hill Place existing building. So again, those were consensus items from the preliminary hearing. Sorry, I lost my place just quickly. You came to the agreement and recognized that there are no um point changes for the um new uh creation of the new planning areas. And there's no additional points to be added under site and environmental design Policy Seven R. Um, and then also for the internal circulation and the required parking for the new development as well as the parking in excess of the requirement um as outlined in the development agreement. So that's thirty-five spaces of additional parking that are reserved for the ski area employees. Um, the, that will not uh it will not be subject to the parking maximums in our code now. And um it's the new language in the ma- uh, in the master plan is just uh solidifying what was written in the development agreement. And then finally, um, we looked at the new proposed language for the vesting, which again just brings over the agreed upon best new vesting date of November eighth, twenty thirty-two. That was agreed in the development agreement for the master plan. And that was, um, that language was approved by you previously. Um, so finally, to the one change that occurred since um between the preliminary hearing and this final hearing, um, that's regarding uh new Section Seven in the master plan and it pertains to employee housing. And so the development agreement outlined what employee housing was required by the applicant. So that's um the units on the Entrada site. And as, and those are the required units for the East Peak Eight development. And then in addition to that, they are also providing some employee housing um in conjunction with the town on parcel two where North Gold Rush Lot is. Um, so the language that's added here just outlines that in the future, would there be changes to the um code, the development code that they would not be under a new obligation to provide extra employee housing?
Until twenty thirty-two.
Until after the vesting period has ended for the master. And that um provision, this employee housing, um, no extra obligation would have, the language would apply to parcel four, that's the hotel site, as well as Planning Area G and H, which are um single-family home sites proposed. And um this is to protect the applicant. There has been discussion about changing the inclusionary zoning rules with Town Council that would require some additional workforce housing even for enough single-family homes. So this is insulating the applicant from those potential changes. Okay, so to summarize the existing um point analysis, which again, this point analysis, like we discussed in the previous work session with the council, is a carryover because the master plan is still vested. So these points exist and they're not changing with this new analysis and newly proposed developments and di- density changes. So we have a total of negative eight points. That's negative four points under Policy Seven R for site disturbance along County Road Three. Detention ponds and walls on Peak Seven. Another negative two points under Policy Seven R for disturbance associated with retaining walls on Peak Seven. Another negative two points for wetlands impacts on Peak Seven. And then finally, we have positive ten points, um, positive four points under Policy Seven R for providing connectivity and, or sorry, the locations that were previously chosen for the Peak Seven sites avoided um ski terrain and eliminated uh development upon those steep slopes. And so they got positive four points for that previously. Under Policy Sixteen, there were positive three points awarded previously for internal pedestrian circulation. And then under Policy Twenty-four R, positive three points for meeting a previous identified council goal. So that uh is a positive passing score of two points. Um, I'm happy to take questions on anything that was discussed um previously or the newly proposed language. Um, and the applicant is also here. I'm not sure if they want to make a presentation or if they, they are happy to take questions, however. Thank you.
Sarah, I have a question. The uh seventy-four points to, to SFEs to be used in any category, is that something that they will use during the design process to add something, take something, or what? How is that used?
That's just incorporated in their total allowed density and they could use it for commercial or It's allowed, you know, however they see it fit with their programming that where they need those SFEs. Uh, most likely it'll be residential based on the previous proposals that we've seen for um, the hotel development on site on parcel four. So I would anticipate the majority of those SFEs are residential.
But that's primarily to give them some flexibility as they design the building. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Muted, Keely.
Oh, sorry. I don't actually have anything to say right this second.
Mark, I've got a question for you.
Yeah.
Uh, at what point um do we or do we not discuss the letter that was submitted from Mr. Himmelstein?
Yeah, um. So.
Because it kind of speaks to some of these issues, but it seems to me it's, it's too late to.
You, you're, well, that, that's basically public comment that you've received. So.
It was gonna address that with a question to Sarah.
Yeah, you can absolutely ask questions to Sarah about that and then discuss it more later.
What I was gonna say was, there are five points raised in a letter from the public. From my interpretation, each of those questions would apply to a site-specific application, not to the master agreement. Is that correct?
Partially, I would say that's true. Some of the items raised are um agreements that would be between uh the applicant and another private party that the town couldn't weigh in on anyway. Um, so there, it was kind of a mixture of two. Some of the items were addressed through the already approved development agreement and um are actually already incorporated into these master plan amendment. The, the language amendment that's on, that, before you tonight, uh, I believe these issues are addressed or, again, it's something that would be um between a private party and the applicant.
Thank you. That's all I have for staff.
All right.
There any other questions that planning commissioners have?
Did you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Ethan, did you have any questions?
A couple. Um, nice presentation, Sarah. And um mindful that I wasn't here for the June um meeting. Uh, one is just a tiny question. The note Imperial is in your drawings for, for um pointing to the new building. For the life of me, I can't figure out what that means.
Is that pointing to the Imperial Peak Eight lift, like the top of the lift? Sorry, can you?
But it points to the building.
Let's see. Do you know what page you're on?
Um, page thirty-three, sheet zero four, but it, it's, it's on several sheets.
Um, I'm wondering if the applicant has further information. Maybe they're calling a, a ballroom Imperial or something. No?
Can you use the microphone because we can't hear you? And we need to get it on the record.
DJ Design, um, representing the applicant. Uh, that's just our current name for the project.
Okay.
So, good question.
Is that, that probably shouldn't be in the drawing.
Uh, we could, sure. Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it, uh, you guys tell us if we need to change it. And we will. How's that?
Uh, my second larger question is, I was around in twenty eighteen when there was a discussion on rustic, transitional and contemporary architecture. And I'm, um, it was a good discussion and um I believe that we were all on board that um uh transitional mountain style was appropriate here. Um, that we couldn't be locked in rustic, but that there certainly was a vernacular um to the Peak Eight, Peak Seven base that uh worked well. And that any new East Peak Eight building uh truly should be compatible, just like an infill building should be compatible with the historic district. And everybody agreed to that. Um, however, somewhere buried in all of this is a note about contemporary in the I think it was in the planning area or something. And I just wanted to clarify that somehow wouldn't cancel all of the discussion and the good thought uh and the master plan and the design uh guidelines that this uh would be mountain transitional.
Is that for the applicant?
Well, it's for whoever wants to answer.
I, I will say our intention is to follow, again, Bill Campy, DTJ Design, um, the, this statement here. So that is what our direction is from everybody. That, that, this is our guiding post. Not sure where the other.
So on page thirteen, just to further clarify, under her land use district thirty-nine, the architectural style of this district should reflect the character of the mountain environment. Land use guidelines further state contemporary architecture utilizing natural finished materials. And I just want to make sure that that wouldn't somehow trip up all of the other intent uh to be mountain transitional. So that, that's really kind of a question for you.
I do know that Chris Kulik um heavily uh insisted that we keep your language previous that um stated transitional mountain style parentheses between rustic and contemporary um was included in the design standards language. So that is where we will look when we're reviewing the future application for site-specific. And I think we would have a hard time um justifying anything that would was completely contemporary and not in that transitional style based on the design standards language.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mike. Susan, do you have anything?
No, I was gonna ask whether there were any comments on the current, but.
Keely, do you have anything to add or ask?
Um, I don't. I also was not here for the preliminary hearing, but um did review all of the materials and um, I don't have any questions or comments at this time.
And does the applicant have anything else that they would like to add? As this is a public hearing, are there members of the public who wish to comment?
We do have a hand raised.
Okay. If you can press a star nine, uh, if you're attending by phone and star six to unmute yourself.
Mr. Himmelstein, I've promoted you to a panelist. If you can accept that invitation, you'll be able to speak.
Mr. Himmelstein, are you there?
Uh, yes, I am. Let me try and get my video working.
If you can identify yourself and give your address, uh, for the record, that would be great.
Richard Himmelstein, six seventy-five Peak Six Trail, Breckenridge.
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to briefly say thank you for uh referencing my email. But I do feel that there's a number of things in there that should be included because you're doing a amendment to the master plan. For example, just we have traffic issues and right now, the master plan, for example, shows two hundred, it requires uh Breckenridge Ski Resort to have two hundred parking places on the base of Peak Seven, Peak Eight. And I can't tell you how many times I see vehicles not wanting to park at the Stables parking lot and driving around in circles and just causing traffic issues and hazards. And I just think that, that my, my request is, if we're gonna change the master plan, let's make sure we address all the issues. And for example, these two hundred parking places, I'm sure the Breckenridge Ski Resort would, would be pleased to get rid of the uh public requirement. And I think that would just really help the environment where, where we've moved so much density up to Peak Seven, Peak Eight. I think we've got to try and help, even if it's little, do whatever we can to just minimize these traffic issues. Thank you.
Question, Mr. Himmelstein. Um, those two hundred parking spaces are in the Stables parking lot. Was that what you were alluding to? Question, Mr. Himmelstein. Um, those two hundred parking spaces are in the Stables parking lot. Was that what you were alluding to?
No, I actually think uh the master plan allows those parking places to be uh around. In various spots on Peak Six, I mean Peak Seven, Peak Eight. So I think some of them might be at Crystal Peak, some of them might be at One Ski Hill. I don't think uh the Stables parking lot, the lower level handles uh two hundred vehicles. Uh, so I can't. Say exactly where they are, but I'm just basically saying the master plan right now requires. Breckenridge Ski Resort to provide two hundred public parking places. I mean, maybe the skier drop offs are included in that. But I just think the ski resort would also appreciate not having that requirement on them and it doesn't benefit anyone.
Okay, understood.
I would like to add some context if I can. Um, the requirement in the master plan for those two hundred spaces comes from. An memorandum of agreement that the town actually has with the ski area. It's separate from um this applicant. And it it doesn't um have any bearing on the current application for the amendment to the master plan. So with this amendment proposal, it wouldn't be appropriate to change the language regarding parking. Um, or to open up that memorandum of agreement.
Yeah, it's basically, it's the parking agreement we have with the ski area, which requires the, you know. What is it sixteen hundred spaces here on the gondola lots and that. It's enumerated around town. There's so many spaces up at. Beaver Run that need to be provided, et cetera. So it's bigger than just the master plan for Peak Eight.
So just to address Mr. Himmelstein's question there, what would the procedure be outside of this? Particular application to address that tar- that parking issue?
It would be addressing that agreement, which would mean bringing the town and the ski area to the table on that, something that's been in place for over. Twenty years.
But that would be a town council issue, not a planning commission issue. So they were sensitive to your concerns and maybe some of us even share your concerns. Is nothing that we can really do at this point with this application to address that.
I understand and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. You can see you spent a lot of time going through it, but thank you. Okay, if there's nobody else out there, I'm gonna close public hearing. Nobody else there?
No other hands raised.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner comments and or questions. Alan, let's start with you.
Um, well, thanks, uh, Sarah for taking something that's very large and complex and boiling it down to the. Uh, relevant points for us. Um, I um. Um, I don't have any uh general comments for uh um the amendment. Um, I would say going forward for the. Applicant, um particularly when we do the site development for G and H. Um, I was looking at the uh long-term master plan that the ski resort has with the National Forest Service. And there's some plans um for learning areas and another lift adjacent to G areas G and H. So. And when we get those uh with those applications, it'd be helpful to see how that overlays to what. Uh, your plans are for those two areas. Um, cause from what I read, it looks like it's directly impacted by G and H. So I don't know what the resort knows about. Uh, it's how their plans are affect that. Um, and the only other comment for our uh. Uh, member of the public who sent the letter, and I think there might be some valid point, some of the points he raises. We would welcome him to raise those comments when we get those site specific developments um that come up before us. That's all I have.
Right. Thank you, Alan. Elaine.
Any specific comments, but I feel your pain living up by that area. It's awful trying to get up there when it's busy. So definitely think it's something. Needs to be looked into. Thank you. Thanks, Sarah.
Ethan, do you have any comments or questions?
No comments or questions. Thank you.
Mike, do you have any further comments?
Uh, just the previously noted transition mountain style architecture that lies between rustic and contemporary. Thank you.
Susan, do you have any comments or questions?
I'm it.
Ms. Ambrose, do you have any questions or comments?
None, thank you.
Yeah. And I have no questions or comments. So with that, uh, I will certainly entertain a motion to approve this proposal. And the attached findings and conditionals.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission approved the proposed Peak Seven and Eight Master Plan Amendment. PL twenty twenty-four dash zero one one seven with a passing score of positive two points. And with the attached findings and conditions.
Thank you, Mike. Do you have a second? Second by Alan. As this is a final, um. We can get the roll call vote.
Mr. Lees.
Yes.
Ms. Gort.
Yes.
Prechter.
Yes.
Mr. Giller.
Yes.
Ms. Ambrose.
Yes.
Ms. Proper.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. And looks like we don't have any work sessions. Uh, so do we have a town council report?
Mark, thank you. Okay, uh, the council met two weeks ago. We got one of those rare fifth Tuesdays last week, which. Staff really appreciates. The only, the only Tuesday we have off, Tuesday night we have off. Um, there was a site visit from one to three where the council went out. First to Stables Village to see the progress on that. Many of those homes, a number of those homes are getting close to CO. So that's pretty exciting. Um, you know, you guys saw that a couple of years ago. Um, also, um, and then they went to McCain Parcel. I'll talk a little bit more about that later, but um. They wanted to take a look at possibility of parking on McCain. And uh, and then um, and then went to block eleven to look at the vacant land. It's the undeveloped land in the south part of block eleven, south of the Uller Flats and Blue Fifty-two, where we're talking about a runway development. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later, but the it was a good site visit for them.
Elaborate about the uh McCain and parking a little bit?
Yeah, I'm I'll do that when I get to that. There was an actual agenda item on that mark, so I'll get to it in a minute. Um, there was a uh. We got introduced to um our consultants. They're called Merge, M E R G E. Out of Pennsylvania. They're doing our trail sign plan. So one of the things is um. Over the last twenty years, open space, our open space system, we put up trails, uh signs here and there. Added etiquette signs, added other signs, da da da. Pretty soon you've got a proliferation of signs. And some sign clutter going on and not always a uniform look. Um, so we've hired a consultant to come in and help us with that. And um, part of that is I'm sure gonna be decluttering. Um, but also um. I'm really looking forward to, um, they really um seem like an outstanding company, so um. We're looking forward to working with them over the next, let's say, six months to develop a kind of cohesive sign package for all our trails. So, that's coming.
This decide, this design of the signs, are they also gonna implement the actual?
They'll they'll help with 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 the design.
So there'll be a pat- design package and then you'll go out to a vendor for the signs?
If fabricated, yes. Yep.
Mark, can I just suggest one thing? Um, when they're looking at all of that, particularly the etiquette signs. They're not big enough.
No.
People go.
Christine.
Flying through and uh, you know, they don't read them because they're not big enough to make an impression.
Thanks, Susan, for that. Those ones that you'll see that'll say like, um. Yeah, or no one cares about your Strava, you know, stuff like that. You you've seen them.
They're cute, but uh, I don't think they uh really serve the purpose.
Then as far as the main items, uh, three things that uh. We had a work session on a potential development agreement on Ridge Street. Um, and this would be where. Um, it's called the Copper Baron is the name of the building there. And um. There's some commercial space and we've got an applicant that wants to convert it to um residential. Um, and um, but it's not that straightforward because. Because of our zoning, the amount of residential versus commercial is different on a property, so. They're maxed out on residential space, so um they'd actually have to request the town to provide the density to make up. Difference, even though they're not talking about adding space. But as you know, different uses have different impacts. But any, um, so so that's why we go through that process. But anyway, um, so they're asking for a waiver from one requirement. The prohibition from allowing density to be transferred into the historic district. And then um two, to for the town to transfer the density from its pool of density that it owns, kind of like we've done with workforce housing projects.
They'll have to purchase those SFPs, right?
Well. Yeah, that.
They.
They hope not to. Uh, go ahead.
The fee for the density transfer would be waived. It's based on a um, there's precedent set in that same development. It's the Adams Ridge Development. And we've done this type of conversion in the past um with a different building within Adams Ridge. That also converted a commercial unit to a residential unit. And in that case, we did a um, the town transferred the density in with waived fees. Yeah, so there's a process that we're kind of following with this.
So anyway, um, what we get in exchange is a deed restriction that says. It's gotta be occupied by someone that's in the local workforce thirty hours a week, da da da. And um, then the sticking point and uh is a council is saying, well, we also want. Uh, a rental rest- uh, 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 restriction on rental um amounts that you can charge. If you rent this out and uh to around a hundred percent EMI. And also there was discussion of a sales appreciation cap. So that was at the last meeting. We're actually gonna be going back next week. With a revision on that to the council. Um, and uh, we'll see where that goes, but we'll just keep you updated on that. Um, as far as McCain parking to your question, Mark, um, so. Why the, why this has come up is because right now we're obligated, the town's obligated to provide. About five hundred parking spaces for this key area as part of that parking agreement we were just talking about. And. The town and the ski area agree to where those spaces are located. And these are kind of overflow. Type spaces. So it's what you see out on block eleven today. Um, although right now there's no limit to the five hundred. We've had up to fifteen hundred cars parked up there, you know, like in snow sculpture weekend and stuff like that. Um, as runway development occurs and housing goes in on block eleven, that's gonna shrink down in size. Um, but even if we shrink it down to the five hundred or possibly even a little less than that, and that would be located on the very south end. Adjacent to Upper Blue Elementary, there's concerns about being that being the right place for that parking. Um, for a number of reasons. Uh, one is uh safe passages to schools. Um, the neighborhoods that are already existing north of there, along with the new ones that are being created, are gonna have families. And kids are gonna go right through there. And it's direct line A to B to get to Upper Blue Elementary. And so concerns about conflicts there with all the cars, you know, parked. Um. And it's not the easiest place to find either. People find their way there because it's free, right? Um, so the discussion came up about is there a better place to locate that parking? And the ski area is amenable to looking at. Alternatives. And so McCain has been discussed as a possible alternative. Um, to move that parking out. And the thought right now would be that it would be along the highway. If if he's gone by there, you've probably seen the road getting graded in and everything. Um, so it's that area between where the road is going in. And the highway. Um, and uh, so it'd be kind of elongated.
Like where all the dredge rock is?
Yeah. Yes. And um, so anyway, um. There is de- debate about making that move and the council a little bit divided on that. Some of the things that came up, you hit on one of them, Elaine, dredge rock. Um, the Breck history is supportive of trying to preserve. That dredge rock that's there. It's kind of.
Got plenty by us.
Yeah, there's, there's other places, but they like to see samples in different geographical locations. Um. And um, then there's issues of um, one and two. Some of the things that came up in favor of it are like, this could keep cars out at the edge of town rather than coming in all the way into town to park. Or further into town to park. Um, typically, the people that are parking here are not the people that are going into town for restaurants and stuff like that. They're the brown baggers. They're coming in, they're skiing, they're leaving. Um, so if we can intercept them out on the edge of town, it reduces. Amount of vehicles coming in on Airport Road and further south on Highway Nine, that type of thing. Um. And um, then there was, you know, concerns about, you know, seeing this parking lot. So are there ways to buffer it? Put up a berm, put up more landscaping, that type of thing from the highway. So it's. On the one hand, you want to screen parking. On the other hand, you want people to see it so they know where to turn. So it'd be this kind of fine balance. And then the other questions that were coming up from council were, can we look at maximizing the other parking we have? Such as our parking structure, which on a lot of days has excess capacity in it. There might not any be anyone up on the third level. There might be that four hundred, five hundred spaces available, with the exception of several weeks a year when it's really crowded here in town. And so that's a more complicated thing because it is a discussion with the ski area and. The agreement with the ski area when that was built was that would be in excess of the parking that's in that parking agreement. So um, but then other ideas came up such as what about CMC? There's a big reservoir parking out there that's not always utilized fully. Can we get some kind of agreement with them? So. There's gonna continue to be some looking into those ideas, but end of the day, for the seven council members. Agreed that McCain was a better choice for parking. So based on that, staff's. Kind of moving forward with plans to potentially move that, but trying to do some things to mitigate the concerns of the three that didn't. Um, three council members that weren't very supportive of seeing it moved out there. So um, that's kind of where we are in that. One of the other things that moving the parking off of that property does is it frees up our site plan. For the housing that's going in there. And uh, so that's something that um would be a benefit of that as well in terms of the. All we're all planning for that, you know, we got storage, snow storage, parking, open space. Besides the housing itself that we need to accommodate out there.
So, Mark, is there still discussion about the um summit school district giving up some of the McCain property that they have?
Um, that could be on the table, um, although I think that's a discussion for later. And I I don't think the district is at this point ready to say they're on board with that, but.
That's not where they're looking at parking.
No, no, that's not where the parking is.
I'm a little confused because um, we got a copy of the parking agreement from two thousand and four. In our packet. I printed it out and I probably only got four pages into it. But I'm a little bit confused because they're talking about Breckenridge Ski Resort. being responsible for the parking. And we've always talked about Breckenridge Town being responsible for the parking. So can you clear up that ambiguity that?
Yeah, so I I forget the numbers, but roughly there's like twenty five hundred spaces that need to be provided in town for, you know, winter recreational use. It's something like that, the wording is. The ski area is on hook for most of that. The town has agreed to provide five hundred. It's it's four to five hundred.
So five hundred is a twenty five?
Yes, correct. Yeah, that's how that works.
And that's the five hundred that we're moving around?
Right, we're talking about moving around.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Yep. And then that segues into runway. So they discussed the runway, which is the block eleven housing project, which Ethan was actually in a design shret this morning with me on. So we're moving forward on that. We've hired a development team and it's once again Alan Guerra, architects leading that up, using Thrive as their builder, much as they did out at Stables. We're really happy with how that project's been proceeding. So we're going to continue to use them. We went through an RFP just recently. And we're going to use them at least for the next phase, which is kind of getting to, you know, design that's partway there or most of the way there, will actually go through, be able to go through entitlements with. And then we'll see beyond that, assuming everything goes well. You know, we may continue to use them to do all the construction. So anyway, there was a discussion with the council about we've had some plans done by Norris, some site plans to just take a look in roughly a hundred units on the property. It's about sixteen acres. And it would be primarily single family and duplex with some like triplex town home type product on the north end adjacent to where it's a little higher density and the existing development there. So anyway, we had the council weigh in on some of that and council's kind of in a couple camps. Some are thinking we need to be a little more dense. Maybe we need to be focusing more on duplexes, triplexes, a little more density on the site. Others are more focused on single family, more of a Wellington type product because that's been so successful over the years, which would have ADUs attached to them or detached, but that's still to be determined. But anyway, ADUs would be a component of that, which can help bump up the overall density on the project without it looking much different. So so anyway, we're, we're still kind of working through that. And we're going to be bringing several refined options to the town council here, probably in late September, something like that. So more to come on those, but that's an update for you guys from the last meeting.
Thank you.
I just, I learned from my neighbors and then actually met the owners moving out. Was it the town or the county that bought the property up on Prospect Colt Road?
Oh, you mean McLeary's?
Is that it? Yeah, the, they have the
The Little Daisy?
Cabin, you know, when you go up the Colt Road.
On the road?
They have their garage and then their home is down below it. That's the town.
Yeah.
Because I was asking Ellie, is, are they think, is the town thinking of preserving of like the garage as a, they consider that a historical shed?
We don't consider it historic, but we're, we have a lease with the existing tenants right now. And I think that may well get extended for at least five years.
Oh, wow, okay.
So, yeah, it's not going to go away anytime soon. It was bought for open space purposes to maintain the open space on that property and that route through there to just make sure we didn't have any issues. But, yeah.
Hey. It is seven twenty six and I joined the meeting. Everybody.
Bye, everybody.